Recording.
Hello.
All right, Suzanne, can you unmute yourself if you can hear me?
Yep, got it.
Okay, do we have any other commissioners on the line? Sorry if I just muted you and you were a commissioner.
I know Sarah emailed something in, a question to you, so I think she intends to be here.
Well, let's just wait a couple more minutes here and see if any other commissioners join us. It looks like Barbara's hopping on right now.
I'm here.
Hey Barb, how you doing?
Good.
Okay, so we have Suzanne. We have Barbara. Any other commissioners on the line?
The only one that said she couldn't come was DeeDee, as I understand it.
Yes, that's, that was my understanding too. So we'll just wait. Couple more minutes here and see if Anthony and Sarah can join us this evening. Barb and Suzanne, just so you guys are aware, I did ask Andy, we do not need a quorum for this evening's public hearing. The hearing can continue even if we don't have three members, members show up, so.
Okay. Probably we should get started then because we've got an awful lot of people there.
All right. Okay, so before, um, before we jump into it, there's just a couple of, obviously, we have a lot of. There's been some press on this project and we have a lot of public interest in the project. I see 42 participants. Oh, Sarah's joining us now. I see 42 participants on the call this evening. So there are just some very basic ground rules for comments this evening. When you start, we would like to have your name, your, your, your full name and address for the record. And then we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And that we do not have repeat comments. Also for, for the commission and, and for the public, the purpose of this evening's meeting is for the Planning Commission to recommend a zone change to the, to the city council. And the project itself is. It's a decision between allowing multifamily in a single-family zone or to not. The, the actual site plan itself is not, is not part of the discussion at this stage of, of, of your review. So the comments regarding environmental assessment forms and, and the like are not, not material to tonight's discussion. Andy, do you have any further clarifications on, on that topic?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Andy Brick. I'm the attorney for the Planning Commission. And following up on what Aaron said. Back in September, the city council requested that the Planning Commission give them a recommendation as to whether or not the city council should consider a request for a rezone for the property, the subject property. For those of you that don't know, the city council, the elected officials have the power to rezon property. This commission this evening does not. But before the city council decided whether or not they were going to even entertain the request for the rezone of the subject property, they passed a resolution sending it to the Planning Commission and requesting that the Planning Commission give them a recommendation on whether or not they think the city council should consider the rezone. It's a non-binding recommendation. And the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public input before the Planning Commission makes a decision and sends that recommendation over. There has been a lot of comment, already written comments submitted. I just want to touch very quickly on a couple of things, so it's clear to everybody. A lot of the written comments talk about the SEACER process, the State Environmental Quality Review Act process. And any development of this parcel would be subject to SEACER review. The SEACER review process does not start with this particular recommendation from the Planning Commission, however. Because it's non-binding and it's a recommendation only, the rezone request. If irrespective of the Planning Commission's eventual recommendation, they choose to consider the rezone request, then at that time, the Environmental Quality Review Act process would have to be initiated and strictly followed, procedurally and substantially. We're not at that point yet. All the city council has asked for is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, who they rely upon for their planning expertise, as to whether or not it may be a good idea to consider a rezone of the particular property from residential to planned district. Also, very important to point out, the question before the Planning Commission this evening isn't whether or not this property should be developed. That's not, that's not before the commission. The specific question that I ask you to keep your public comments to are whether or not the Planning Commission should make a positive or negative recommendation to rezon the property from residential one to planned district. The net effect of that is, under a planned district zoning designation, apartments could possibly be built on this parcel. Under the existing R1 zoning, the parcel can be developed for single-family homes. It can't be developed for the park, for apartments. So the primary distinction and the rezone request is to allow for planned district so the city council could consider apartments on this parcel. It's not a question of whether or not the parcel will or we not, will not be developed. We don't know that, we don't control that. The parcel could be developed right now for single-family homes under the R1 zoning. So please don't think that the purpose of this public hearing is the pros and cons of developing the property. The, the purpose of the public hearing is whether or not the Planning Commission should make a positive or negative recommendation to the city council to consider planned district zoning for the property. With that being said, there were also a lot of comments about the comprehensive plan. Clearly, the Planning Commission, when making their recommendation, will have to incorporate the comprehensive plan and the potential impacts or effect of comprehensive plan conclusions and recommendations on, and as part of their recommendation on the rezone. So, so that absolutely will be considered. And that's about it.
Okay, so do, before we get started here, do any of the commissioners have any, any questions for Andy, myself? Any statements to make prior to jumping into public comment?
No.
No, thank you, Aaron.
Anthony, are you on the line? I saw you, I think I saw you hop on.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, so we do have four commissioners on with us this evening. Barb, did you have anything that you wanted to say before we get started?
The public hearing part, the public hearing from the public.
Okay. All right, so for starters, we're going to try to use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. So anyone wishing to speak, if you raise your hand on the Zoom app, that'll pop up on my screen and I will call on you if you can state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please do not repeat previous comments. And please keep in mind that this evening's meeting is not about whether or not to develop this, this parcel, but whether or not it should be developed with single-family homes or multifamily dwellings. Andy Arthur, if you could unmute yourself? See your hand raised?
Yes. Sorry about that, one second. Hi, this is Andy Arthur and I reside at 15A Elmer Avenue, Delmar, New York. I'm offering these brief comments on your advice for the 11011 Second Avenue zoning change proposal. I don't think you can give advice on a zoning change proposal without a full and comprehensive look via environmental impact statement. Advice is a public action. It has a force of law. Even though it's not an actual action, you're advising them, you're giving official advice under, under the cloud of law. So I, I really think you need a full environmental impact statement. I'm very concerned about this proposal because I think it's fairly to give a hard look at how it would impact both the historical and ecological resources along the Hudson River. I believe that based on the developer's own statements and my inspection of the site from the road and from the river, that prior to rezoning change, it would be best to conduct a full environmental impact statement, and even prior to giving any advice on this topic. For one, I think it's just the last section of undeveloped land in Troy along the riverfront. Once it's developed, it's gone forever. It's important to protect, preserve our open space. Notable are the potential archaeological resources that deserve further exploration and the, the impact of developing this land on the Hudson River. I'm also very concerned that, you know, if you rezoned it, you're, you're already moving the thing down the tracks. We need to have a hard look now before any, any action on the site, including rezoning, including any kind of building plan. So I would rather see a environmental impact statement done before this recommendation goes to the, the city council. Thank you for your time and have a great day.
Aaron, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, next up is Jessica Bennett.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, thank you everyone for showing up and sitting in on this public comment meeting and I will do my best to not repeat a lot of points. But I, I do really want to start by saying, really asking, why are we talking about zoning when there are no filed site plans? And when there are no plans, why are we talking about zoning? I think the most important part here, when the question of zoning comes up, is answered inherently in the New York State processes that work that are laid before us. The environmental impact form addresses zoning. Anything beyond this, all, all of the meetings that we're having to discuss, should we zone or not? It feels like a bit of a moot point and it gives credibility to an illegitimate process. We need to follow, if, I don't want to say the law, but New York State is very clear on this. And my fear is for Troy is that if we don't go about this in the correct ways, with the proper channels, is that Troy opens itself up to a lawsuit for not doing it the way that the New York, New York State says we need to. Additionally, this is a lot of time and effort for everyone, for the city council, for the Planning Commission, for everyone involved. And for it to come down to that we're not even doing it the right way. I have faith in the process of the environmental assessment form and the SEACER process. And all of these concerns that I think so many of us tonight are here to talk about, actually, it gets addressed in the SEACER process. My, my question is, why isn't the Planning Commission and the city council, of course, following this New York State process? You know, I applaud everyone for taking time to, to look at all of this and talk about this. But really, this is already handled if we just go about doing things the right way. Whether it's amending the comprehensive plan with discretionary actions or it's, it's talking about should we rezon, should we not? All of this is addressed if we just go about and do this the right way. So my, my ask is that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council that they don't make any decision on rezoning until a full environmental assessment form is filled out and a full SEACER review is completed. Thank you very much. And my name is Jessica Bennett and I live at 1009 Second Avenue, immediately adjacent to the property that we're discussing tonight.
Hey, Aaron, it's Andy. If, if I may real quickly, maybe, maybe I wasn't completely clear. Any rezone of the property would absolutely require the SEACER process be followed, including a full environmental assessment form. The only, this SEACER isn't triggered yet because a recommendation to the city council, which is what this board will be doing, isn't an action as defined by SEACER. It's a non-binding recommendation as to whether or not the city council should pursue an action. So if I was misconstrued, please let me clarify. Any, if the city council chooses to consider a rezon for this property, it will be fully subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. What isn't subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act is this board's non-binding recommendation as to whether or not the city council should consider the rezone. So I, I just wanted to clarify that because the first two speakers right out of the bat said follow SEACER. SEACER will be completely followed if the city council chooses to consider the rezone.
Right, and just, Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but just a little bit of further information. The city council, even with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, does not have to entertain the rezone. Is that, is that correct? That the legislation for the rezone may not be introduced by the city council. Is that, is that also correct?
Correct. Any, any. The city council, the commission's recommendation, regardless of what it is, either way, and chooses to allow the applicant to process a rezone request. That would be subject to public hearings. That would likely come back to the Planning Commission. And it would be subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. If planned district zoning was granted, and I'm not saying the, the city council is even going to consider it, let alone granted. But if it was, it would necessarily need to include a specific project that would also be reviewed and approved, not just by the Planning Commission, but, but through the SEACER process. So no aspect of the SEACER process is going to get missed. It just doesn't start yet until the city council says, yes, we're going to consider this, our request for the rezone. And, and that hasn't occurred yet.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. So with that in mind, if we could keep future comments, again, on, on topic, the topic being whether, whether or not multifamily housing should be developed on this site or if it should remain where only single-family housing can be developed on this site. I don't see any other hands raised on, on Zoom. I'm, I'm assuming with 54 participants, there's some more comments, so I'll give it a minute here.
Aaron, may I quickly follow up? This is Jessica?
Quickly, yes.
Um, so at the, at the previous meeting where the developer did a workshop, public comments weren't allowed. And it, it feels like we're having discussions about the site plans already. And there are no concrete plans. But more important to me is that the environmental assessment form deals with the rezoning. Like it almost feels like it will take a load off of the Planning Commission's plate if it, proper processes are followed and it's explored as it's going to be anyway, should proper processes be followed.
Proper processes will absolutely be followed. The, the reason why we did not have public comment at the previous meeting was because, as you can see, we have 55 participants on the call this evening and we just didn't have the time to do both the workshop and public comment, which is why we held a separate meeting for that. The, the environmental assessment form will be submitted to the council if they choose to take on this legislation. The next hand I see raised is CB. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Keep your comments to three minutes or less and, and please, no repeats.
Hi, okay, thank you. I'm going to read a statement that I've prepared, so. It should be short. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'd just like to say that while I can.
Name and address, did I miss your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm just diving right into it. Christina Bennett, I live at 501 Broadway in downtown Troy. So while I can respect Troy's need for economic diversification and truly understand that, I also advocate for the city and its professionals to prioritize your role and the city's role as a steward of the site. And tonight I'd like to focus my comments on the unique cultural importance of this particular parcel to the city and the current residents of Troy and Lansingburg, as well as to the original stewards of the site, as we know, the Mohegan people and their heritage. And I'll elaborate upon my point from a contemporary standpoint in the statement that follows, so I'm not interested in nostalgia. The point is furthermore critical to my perspective as an architecture and landscape architectural professional, as I'm intimately aware of and understand the need for stronger ethical and moral alignments in our practices, cities and urban policies. This is something we should all be working towards making better and making amends for as a community, both in the design professions, architecture, landscape, architecture, engineering, urban planning. As such, I believe the site can serve as an exemplar in the city of Troy and the capital region, as well as sites throughout upstate New York and certainly to other cities along the Hudson River for its recognition of historical significance and our ability as a community to make meaningful reparations at acknowledgement of our collective values, as well as empathetic recognition of what has come before us and most certainly the impacts of what come after us. I say with respects to the single-family housing or single-owner and multi-unit housing development, that I would strongly not recommend a rezone change from RES1 to a planned district. And, sorry, just following my notes. Oh, and furthermore, I'd recommend that the Planning Commission consider addressing contemporary social ethics and social justice issues as represented in the principles of restorative justice outlined by Jerome Hafford insights in Harlem as well as others. So I'd be happy to talk more about restorative justice or these ideas, but just to be clear, I, I am making a negative recommendation or that there should not be a rezone change to a single-owner, multi-unit development, but rather I think it would be better to have multiple ownership on that parcel going forward in the future. Thank you. Apologize if that was a little bit lengthy. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker I'd like to call in is Rebecca Martin.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Martin and I am the acting director of the Community Partnerships Program at Riverkeeper, located in the city of Kingston, New York. This afternoon, Riverkeeper and Sina Hudson submitted a joint to be placed on the record outlining our position regarding the Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council for zone change of 1011 Second Avenue from R1, single-family residential detached, to PDD, planned development district by the developer Kevin Bandenberg. As our letter points out, during the development of the Realized Troy Comprehensive Plan that was, that was adopted in 2018, undertook a robust public involvement process. During that, it was not anticipated that the undeveloped wooded parcel at 1011 Second Avenue would be appropriate, would be an appropriate place for intense development. In this case, approximately 240 multifamily units, an increase in density of 666%. In fact, Realized Troy specifically includes this parcel in the low-rise residential land use category and the rezoning request would permit four-story buildings. If granted by the city council, the rezoning from R1 to PTD would not be in accordance with the recently adopted Realized Troy Comprehensive Plan as required by New York General City Law, Section 28A12. Furthermore, given the well-documented archaeological sensitivity of the site, concerns raised by representatives of indigenous peoples and the site's location in a potential environmental justice area, we request that the Planning Commission take seriously the comments and concerns expressed by representatives of indigenous peoples with ties to the site. In light of the above, Sina Hudson and Riverkeeper urge the Planning Commission to be good stewards of this important cultural site and therefore recommend against the application to rezon tax partial number 70 dot 64 dash 1 dash 1 on Second Avenue from R1 to PDD. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next speaker. Jennifer's iPad.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sure. Yep, thank you. Jennifer Schulener. I live at 2161 12th Street. It's the Beeman Park neighborhood in Troy. So I would urge the Planning Commission to not recommend changing that parcel for multifamily development. I think that would allow time for a more communal and community, like forest use of that land. There's so much, I'm not, definitely, you know, economic development is important in the city of Troy. I think that's the wrong spot. I think it's just going to increase sprawl. And there's, I think the, we should stick more to like building the urban core and leaving nature for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, could I just have you spell your last name and provide your address one more time for my notes?
Oh, sure. It's S C H U L A N E R.
Yes.
And 2161 12th Street, 12180 Troy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I see next I have Grace Bluegreen.
Good evening. This is Grace Nichols. I live at 48 Smith Lane, Burn, New York. And I've worked as a grassroots activist on land conservation struggles before. So the reason I wanted to speak tonight is I was able to go out there and survey the land and take a look at just what the practical implications of putting four-story buildings on top of that majestic slate cliff right next to the Hudson River would be. And several things came to mind as serious, practical reasons why it would be inappropriate to entertain that kind of development. One is that such development would take away a buffer that the Hudson River has to protect its water quality. And that kind of parking with the expected oil spills and other kinds of what, discharges that will run into the Hudson River really isn't the kind of thing we want to do as conservators of the Hudson. But, but on top of that, there's things like the traffic. That is actually a heavily traveled road right there. That is actually a heavily traveled road right there um with one lane in each direction. It's would be very difficult to accommodate a lot of traffic. Running in and out of two hundred and forty apartments. It's just, I can't see how that would. Um, not tie up traffic to the extent that it would be dangerous. So I I there would need to be a comprehensive traffic study. Before any kind of positive recommendation could be made. The other thing is that there's a view, a problem. If you go four stories up on um a high cliff like that. Then the people in those apartments can look right into the yards and the windows. Of the one-story buildings on the other side of the Hudson. Hudson is fairly narrow right there. They can look right down into the yards of the people who live across the road who are in one-story buildings. So there's a a need for comprehensive viewscape analysis, including what the changing. Of the microclimate and the shading would do to the species who depend on that land. It's really important land for species. There's both birds that depend on the Hudson that use it. And though I was there in the winter, I can see that there needs to be. Good surveys, uh species surveys done. Throughout the spring, summer and fall to really see what insects, um plant life. For flora and fauna are supported um by that land. Um. It's, it's, it does not seem to be an appropriate place, especially if you look at. What the effect of the kind of blasting that would be necessary to build there would be on the Hudson and on the community. So I would uh seriously request that the planning commission not recommend, not recommend the rezoning. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Grace. Uh, Grace, could I just have your last name one more time?
Sure. My last name's Nichols, N I C H O L S, and thank you for holding this hearing.
Thank you. Um, the next hand raised. Let me see. There was a name here. Uh, Waterford. I'm sorry, Waterfall Unity.
Hello. Hello. Yeah, hold on one second. I'm starting video. Um, hi, hi, everybody. Um. My name is Bethany Yarrow. Um, I'm in uh Skowhary County and I would like to speak. Um, on behalf of the Waterfall Unity Alliance. Um, and Roger Ganatio-Jock, who is a Mohawk leader from Acustasni. And he submitted a statement uh to the planning commission. Um, of the city of Troy, and I would like to read that on his behalf. He's actually can't get on, so he's on the phone and. Watching this and maybe if you'd like to say some more after reading.
In the interest of time, in the interest of time, if you've submitted written comments. We we ask that you not, you not read those comments this evening. Um, we have, we have fifty-eight participants we have to get to. And those comments have been forwarded to the planning commission and they will be made part of the the meeting minutes from this meeting. So they will be part of the public record and we just, we we have a lot of people to get through.
Okay, then, um, I would, uh, Roger, would you like to say anything? Or would you like your words to speak for themselves or just send greetings?
I believe that the greetings, you know, that we are watching this. We are. Here and we are waiting to see the outcome of. The direction this is gonna take, so. We hope that um. Comments, we have to harness our words in ways that. Threaten the peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the next person I'd like to call on is uh Wild Bill. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Keep your comments to three minutes or less and and please not repeat any comments that the board has received this evening.
Okay, hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Hi, uh, my name is Bill Studford. I reside at three-one-one Richfield Street in Troy. Uh, one-two-one-eight-zero, no, eight-two, sorry, my bad. And as regards the. Uh, recommendation, I would. Strongly suggest recommending against rezoning from R one to plan development. Um. For various reasons that many people already hit regarding wildlife and. Water quality and community quality of life. I can't much say that I. I like it as it is. Be honest. I think it's a very good natured resource for the community. Uh. If someone were to put in, say, three, four, or five houses, whatever would fit on the parcels. Hypothetical, single-family R ones, then so be it. It would. It would be far less jar-jarring than four-story buildings, three and four-story buildings. I think that. Would be just far too much for that location. Um. So again, I would recommend. Against, against rezone. Say, leave it as an R one. Or tell the council, leave it as an R one. Thank you for your time and thank you for hosting this hearing. How, and for for your notes, since I suspect you're gonna ask. Uh, last name is spelled S's and Sam. T U D as in dog, D as in dog, I F O R D.
Okay, for the record, I was very close.
Excellent, excellent. Always like to hear that.
Thank you, Bill. Um, next, uh. Azure.
Hey, that was a good pronunciation. Um, it's my uh partner's computer. My name is Christian Gregoroskos. I reside at four eighty-eight Second Avenue, about a mile and a half down the road from the proposed site. Um, I'm an arborist, so I spend a lot of time in trees, but I'm gonna save you from a tree-loving rant right now. Concerning the um, the question that's on the board. Uh, I've been sitting on the Troy Zoning Update Steering Committee for the past year. So I've, I think I'm finally starting to wrap my head around. The zones and the way they're laid out in the city and what the city hopes to do going forward. Um, and just using that information and. My experience living in this part of town for the last five years and frequenting the area. Um, uh, up and down all over the city, mainly north of the Husick Bridge. All the way, you know, taking the, taking the shortcut up to Irish Road, past the the neighborhood in question. I like the feel of it as it is currently. Small houses feels like you've gotten out of the city the second you pass Hannaford. Um, so I would strongly urge against changing. The zoning classification to a planned development district. I think uh Hannaford should probably be the northern boundary. So there's plenty of space south of that if you wanna. Um, make some bigger projects happen. Especially if it's gonna involve tearing into virgin territory that's never been touched uh for hundreds, hundreds of years. Uh, I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next. S E Pesdick.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can. Can you?
Oh, hello?
Uh, we can hear you. Uh, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, my name is Sarah Pesdick. My address is thirty-two Kovell Avenue in Round Lake, New York, one-two-one-five-one. Uh, before I go into my statement, I would just like to make an initial comment with regards to the absolute disrespect that you just paid. An indigenous member of this community for not allowing them to speak their voice. Um, it's absolutely infuriating um that you are not allowing them to read their written statement into the record. Um, on that note, I'm going to go into my statement on that I'm making on behalf of the Friends of the Mahigantuck. Um, as a group, the Friends of the Mahigantuck urge you, as well as the city council and the mayor, to ensure the following. One, to prioritize the preservation and stewardship of ten eleven Second Avenue. This has to be the city's highest priority. Two, the city of Troy must follow the law. The proposed development and rezoning request must be considered together according to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Therefore, the commission's recommendation to the common council regarding rezoning. Should be that the developers submit its environmental assessment form, which is the EAF. That would include the need for rezoning to avoid segmentation. And in order for the project and all of the proposed discretionary decisions such as rezoning. To be studied during a thorough, transparent, and inclusive secret review process. As you know, the Friends of the Mahigantuck have been continuously advocating for a win-win solution. We are prepared to do our part and to contribute towards realizing the proper preservation of this land for everyone. As a site that provides evidence of a five-thousand-year indigenous history. It is imperative that our elected and appointed officials commit to working with members. Of all indigenous peoples with historical ties to this land. As well as the community to preserve this sacred land. Even more so as this is a location that the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Has determined as a potential environmental justice area. The breadth of community opposition, including our platform and over twenty-three hundred signatures on our petition. Makes unmistakably clear that the public stands behind this vision for preservation of this land. We urge you to join us to work towards realizing this vision. Furthermore, we want to articulate grave concerns. About the out-of-step process in which the city of Troy is currently considering a rezoning request approval. For a project that has yet to undergo its environmental review. That segmentation in Secra and contrary to its intent. Furthermore, it's a glaring process flaw that leaves the city of Troy vulnerable to future loss.
Sarah, not to interrupt here, but but you're, you're now touching on subjects that have been covered previously.
I do, as a member of the public in an open meeting, have my right to state my comments, so I would like to continue my um, my.
I I I don't think that's gonna be the best use of our time this evening. Thank you, Sarah. I'm gonna move on to the next person.
Hi, they just cut me.
Brent, Brandon Miller.
They totally just cut me off.
Wow.
I hope you don't cut me off, but I'll give it a go. My name is Brandon Miller and I'm a homeowner on the river at eight oh three First Avenue. Directly across from People's Island, a few blocks south of one oh one one Second Avenue. I've often referred to this amazing spot as the eighth wonder of the world. Many a time, I've taken canoe and kayak along the very shallow shores of this mystical landscape. Imagining the footsteps of Native American elders on this land. As an invited participant of the two thousand and eighteen Realized Troy Comprehensive Plan. I witnessed unanimous agreement of our water's deeply intrinsic value on the quality of life in Troy. Changing, changes in zoning to support multifamily development. Will result in a serious erosion of trust. For the past three decades, I've been committed to the cultural and economic development of Troy. In my role as Professor of Media Arts at RPI. And as Arts and Education Coordinator at the Sanctuary for Independent Media. I've worked with our uptown summer youth who met tribal representatives. To learn about the vital importance of the Stockbridge-Muncie community and the Mahigantuck's five-thousand-year history along these shores. Many of the youth growing up in the economically disadvantaged neighborhoods of North Troy and Lansingburg. Have little or no relationship to the Hudson, just a few blocks from their homes. Especially in the midst of the pandemic and an uncertain future. We must embrace our natural resources and stand against intensive development. I've witnessed countless eagles flying along these shores. The Native Americans consider the eagle to be sacred, signifying courage, wisdom, and strength. Members of the planning commission, please be our stewards. For this treasure on the Hudson and do not support rezoning of multifamily development. Thank you.
Brandon, do you have that statement for, do you have that written down?
I um submitted a longer letter. This was a smaller.
We have that statement, I'm just for the record?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Jen Baumann, or I'm sorry, uh, Baumstein.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so before I I share my comments, I just want it to be noted here that that. There was a lengthy letter from Don Ritner, who is a professor of archaeology, author and historian that detailed the history of the space. Um, members of the committee should have a copy of that, so. Um, I will leave that off to respect the time limit. Um, Ritner spent some of the letter discussing the names of the places in Lansingburg. And the, and the whole community and how those names are derivative of. The people whose land this is. My personal connection to the land is both of a fan of the space and as a professional educator. I am a certified social studies teacher. Oh, and I live at one-one-four Pine Woods Avenue. Um, you have my name there. I am a cert, I'm a certified social studies teacher. And we, uh, as teachers, cover the life of the Haudenosaunee in fourth, seventh, and eleventh grade in New York State. Which is great, but teaching about a group in abstract is much less effective than a local connection. Especially uh sort of as to what Brandon was speaking about, our students are currently at home and the, we can really think of better uses of. Our, our space, um reclaiming it so that it is an educational space, including keeping. The zoning as it is and welcoming and designing amazing virtual experiences and resources for keeping the history alive. Um, we can't cover this potential for future conservationists, educators, cultural workers, and people who can make a difference in their community. By turning it into a space that is going to be multi-use, uh, multifamily housing and ultimately. A destruction of our our local history. Thank you.
Aaron, are you on mute?
I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, I am on mute. Um. It's okay, though. I was looking through. I was trying to figure out who's next here. Uh, Jessica Holt.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I wasn't originally planning to talk, but I I did wanna say something. Um, so I will try to keep it um. Concise. Um, so I understand that this is a meeting about whether or not to rezone. Um, not whether or not to develop, and while I feel strongly that we shouldn't be. Um, developing, I'm going to keep my comment to why I think we shouldn't rezone um and why I'm strongly against that. Um, so I'm, so I live in Albany. Um, I live on Norwood Avenue. I prefer not to give the, the exact house number if that's all right. Um, I'm originally from Long Island and the indigenous peoples there, um, there are a number of. Um, different Algonquin groups there and the Chinacock, one of them has recently had, recently for, for years. They've been having to fight back against, um. Against a lot of large development projects which have. Um, ended up digging up bones of their ancestors and they've had to fight for the right to not have that happen. And I feel as if, um, I mean, this country has a long history of trampling on indigenous rights. But particularly with larger business endeavors, um, it tends to get out of hand quicker. So, so while of course I don't want development at all. Um, in that area, which is culturally important and environmentally important. I think it's also important to think about the fact that if we open it up to this large. Um, four-story apartment complex, it's going to be much harder to control down the line how much damage is done. And uh, I just don't want to see that happen. Um, so even though I'm I'm still relatively new to the capital region, but I think it's really important that we consider those things. And can consider the local indigenous communities here um in those decisions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Let's see, Adam Fisher?
Yes, speaking. My wife would like to say a word.
Hi, this is Evangeline Fisher. It used to be 1079 Second Avenue, and now it's Nine Cedar, but we're the last house in the city of Troy before Scaticote. We're unique in that our property will be butt up against this new development to the right of our house and behind our house. All there is is woods now, so when I'm washing the dishes, I see the fox, I see the rabbits, I see the sunrise, I see the sunset. So obviously, we've raised our two kids here. We've been here 31 years. This is our retirement home, and to think that apartment buildings are going to go up, and we won't be able to see any of that, where are the wildlife going to go? I am highly against the rezoning. I can't do anything if they buy it and put up a home. I prefer that not happen either, but yeah, that's...I don't know all the logistics and the legal stuff. I didn't even know anybody was going to build or try to until we saw them tagging and walking across our property over the summer, telling us they were taking soil samples. They couldn't tell us what they were doing it for. They jammed stakes into the bottom of our first maple tree we ever planted, which was 31 years ago, and stakes on our property, so my husband couldn't mow, he had to move them. And they told us that we didn't have to worry about anything, that it was all shale, which we knew, and that digging would be almost impossible. So it wasn't until we were contacted by another person in this neighborhood that we were made aware of it. So we're a little upset that that's the only way we were made aware of it. It hasn't been on TV. It hasn't been on any of the news. We haven't gotten a letter, but we definitely oppose this zoning so that they can put the apartment buildings up and preferably not even be touched at all, because we walked through those woods with our children and now with our grandchildren, and that's all we'll be seeing at night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Krugler?
Hi, everyone. My name is James Krugler. I'm a resident at 108 Third Street in Troy, and I want to speak up tonight in opposition to the requested zone change, and I'm asking the Planning Commission to recommend against it. I've been working for years now as a stormwater computer modeler, and so I want to add a little bit to the discussion of how the zone change could destroy the ability of this land to provide some considerable ecosystem services to the people of Troy. This rezoning will, by definition, involve changing the land use here, whether we're considering family, single-family residential, the current zoning as our point of reference, or if we're using the current state of the land as our point of reference. I mean, changing the land use here from too high-intensity developed land means necessarily this land will generate greater amounts of common surface water pollutants, total nitrogen, total phosphorus, suspended solids, and at the same time, there will be less intercepted rainfall and more surface runoff overall. So with any plan intending some rapid deforestation at the edge of a major river network, we're looking at worse stormwater pollution and more of it. I also want to say that I think some of the confusion about whether or not the current decision before the Planning Commission has to do with land development, either in general or considering a specific development plan, could be due in part to the fact that some kind of unofficial development plan, whether by accident or by design, made its way into the agenda of the meeting where development is not the topic at hand. I mean, I found that a bit curious and confusing, and I'm sure not the only one here who might feel a little misdirected. If I could, I would suggest that these supposedly irrelevant documents be kept out of the agenda to avoid this kind of confusion in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Misria and Maggie, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Yeah, you got it right, Aaron. Thank you. I'm Misria Shekali, and I live on the Fourth Street. I would like to not disclose my house number. So I'm actually going to just add a supplementary point to many of what people have told here. You may show, the Planning Commission may show in colorful numbers of how this developmental project is going to help and benefit the community in large numbers. You can show very, very colorful numbers, but what you cannot measure is the ecological damage this is going to cost by removing the last, almost the last forest cower in the city of Troy. And if you're going to remove it, there's going to be impact, strong impact, in the short term and in the long term, given all the climate emergency that we are facing right now. In the long term, it can lead to severe damages for the city of Troy, which also includes flooding and also like, you know, accelerating industrial pollution and stuff like that. So I would really, really ask you to consider not rezoning this, the land. And lastly, I think good planning practice right now would be to integrate environmental concerns and the climate emergency that we are facing as a community, as the people of Earth, and so on. So please don't consider rezoning this at all, and we cannot show the impact that it will have on the environment in numbers, while you can show the impact it will have on the development, on the so-called development of the community. So just for the way that we cannot really measure this, I would consider you to not rezone. There's ecological damage is irreversible. We are facing the effects, and it's urgent. And as a youth who is very much concerned about climate change, I totally like opposed this.
Thank you. Shiri C.
Hi, I'm Shiri Cammer, C-A-M-M-E-R, 137 Hidley Road, Wyandotte Skill. I'm next door to Troy. I urge us all to consider a vision for what this land can be. I don't see how we can think about zoning at all without thinking of vision. If right now it's residential 35 homes, that would not be good. I think we're looking at this backwards, and I asked permission to walk this land. I asked permission of Kevin, and he graciously got permission, and we walked the land together. And I asked him, "Kevin, do you remember the crows came?" And I asked, "What do the crows think about your plans?" And I'm just wondering if there may be a possibility of some sort of minimal building on the site that would be not much footprint at all for the built environment that perhaps Kevin could be involved in, that would demonstrate to the world how maximum amount of trees and forests could be preserved?
Okay, thank you. Stevie Hipwell, I see your hands up.
Hi, my name is Stevie Hipwell. I live on 129 Fourth Street in Troy, New York. I have a statement from Dr. David Hunt, a renowned ecologist and expert for Rensselaer County. A lot of you seem to be well aware of the ecological impact of developing this nationally significant indigenous heritage site. So for now, I won't waste the precious time of this council by amplifying that standpoint. This statement in its entirety is entered into record, and I urge the Planning Commission to review this before making any decisions. I do, however, want to touch again on the blatant disregard for the land held sacred by indigenous peoples. The fact that there's even a thought of developing the land is disgusting. To develop on this land is an insult to the community and the planet, and that's all I have to say for now.
Okay, thank you, Stevie. Any other...I don't see any other raised hands. If you do not know how to raise your hand, but you know how to send a message through the chat, feel free to do that. I've been checking the chat throughout here to try to call on people. Okay. Is there...yes, Keith, go ahead, Keith. Sorry, I can't...you're not on my screen. I don't see you raising your hand.
No, I apologize, and I've been looking for the little hand raised thingy, and I cannot find it, so I apologize for that. My name is Keith Yurakawa. I'm a professor of law with focus on environmental law and local governments in particular. I did submit written comments, particularly some stuff regarding environmental impacts and ecosystem services, which James addressed, and I won't repeat those here. I did have a couple procedural comments to make, though. And the first one is with regards to the comprehensive planning process. I think it was noted either by Mr. Brick or Mr. Vera that certainly a recommendation from this commission would have to address what changes would have to be made to the comprehensive plan to accommodate this rezone, but of course, that's not how the process is supposed to work, right? The zoning is supposed to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and not the other way around, and I note that your notice of hearing did not indicate that there would be consideration of a comprehensive plan revision or amendment tonight. I think it's critical, especially given the breadth of comprehensive planning process and how remarkable Troy's comprehensive plan is, that we don't put the cart before the horse and that we consider in a comprehensive manner what this proposal would do to the city of Troy, to the sense of place, the neighborhood character, to the ecology, to the coastline, and of course, all the ecosystem services that accompany this parcel before even considering a proposal for rezone. But that wasn't before this commission tonight, or at least not as far as I could tell, that the comprehensive plan amendments weren't before, and it's problematic, right? Because as I understand from New York law, a zoning amendment that contradicts the comprehensive plan is just flat-out illegal, and I put in my comments some indications of where the comprehensive plan directly was contradicted by the planned development district, and I hope you take those under consideration. But the more important point, I think, is with regards to the idea that environmental assessment is not material or relevant to the discussion. Certainly, because this board makes only recommendations and not decisions, it is not mandated to take on the secret processes, lead agency, but the problem is, they got this push from the city council, who would act as lead agency, and the EAF should have accompanied that, because there's no way this commission can make a reasoned decision about this rezone without considering the property that's being rezoned, and that's what SECRE is about, right? SECRE is our insurance policy to make sure enough information is before the decision-maker so we don't make bad decisions, right? In ignorance of facts and in ignorance of the standards and policies that we value in the community. So whether we're doing it under guise of SECRE or not, this hearing should very much be about the archaeological, historical resources, about First Nations, about ecology, about ecosystem services, about this site. What we need to figure out is whether it's appropriate for this site to be developed at densities that just not only weren't considered in the comprehensive plan, but were flat-out rejected in the comprehensive plan, right? So this proposal is creating the kind of inconsistencies that were rejected because this, you know, that wasn't the vision of Troy, and I think that's important, right? And so I would suggest to the Planning Commission that whether you're doing it under the guise of SECRE or not, that you do consider the very important ecological characteristics of this land, the important historical significance of this land, something that clearly is relevant to SECRE, but is also relevant to your recommendation to the city council on whether it's appropriate to have dense development here. And with that, I would add that even though you may not be mandated to engage in the secret process, SECRE does not keep you from doing that analysis. In fact, you are free to engage in the secret analysis, so it's your choice to skip SECRE at this point in time and leave it up to the city council. I'm not sure that's the best way to go about this, especially given the nature of the comments at issue. And so I would leave you with the idea that the way it looks, I think, to the folks that are testifying tonight, is that you seem to be drawing a box, right, of the things that are relevant to your recommendation to the city council, and you've placed outside of that box cultural values, ecological values, ecological sense of place, community character, all of the things that make this community important to those who live in it, and I would strongly urge you to enlarge that box, take into consideration the values that you're hearing tonight. My name is Keith Yurakawa. I live at 100 Rickards Lane Extension in Wyandotte Skill, and thank you.
Hello, this is Bethany Yaro of the Waterfall Unity Alliance, and I would like to be asked to read this statement. I think it's important for the community and for anyone who is watching on Zoom. Everyone keeps mentioning First Nations peoples, and I have the words of a First Nations elder here, Mohawk on the line. So I am going to read this into the record, and I think you owe personally, Mr. Ganatyo Jock, an apology for cutting him off. So this says, "Greetings to the members of the Planning Commission and the community of the city of Troy, New York. I would like this letter to be added to the record. My name is Ganatyo Roger Jock. I am Ganyanka Haga, Mohawk, Bear clan from Akwasasni. My great-grandmother is from the Skohari region of the Mohawk Valley. This is where my DNA comes from, and my ancestors have a long history of relations with the Mohican people that continues to this day. I am also the project director of the Waterfall Unity Alliance, based in West Fulton, New York, where we are building a traditional longhouse as an initial point of return to our ancestral soils. The mission of the Waterfall Unity Alliance is to protect the Mohawk watershed and all earth and create solutions to the existential challenges of our time. It is no longer just the native people of this land who know that we need to respect the earth, live in reciprocity, and stop destructive development in the name of so-called progress. Our economy should not be based on destroying the earth. The native trees have a right to be here. Our children have the right to be able to come and visit this forest, sit by the river, gather medicines. This is a rare place of peace that is senseless to destroy. Now that it is threatened, the people who continue to love and honor the land are here to say, 'Stop. No, no more. No more development that destroys the last forests. No more paving over ancestral land. No more short-term gain for long-term destruction. We join our voice to theirs and say, 'No more to this old story that is leading us to extinction. We need to walk together in a new way. We respect the history of the Mohicans on this land. The land is sacred. The river is sacred. The trees and the breathing life on the riverside are sacred. It is time to protect what is sacred and protect what we love. We need to stand together and make our old agreements new again. As long as the water flows and the grasses grow, we will respect each other and walk together under the great law of peace, protecting the earth and all creation in unity. Ganatyo Roger Jock.'" Thank you for your time, and thank you, everyone, for listening to the words of someone who has original roots in this land and is coming back to help and to stand to protect the land for all of the future generations, not just for one developer or one city council who doesn't have the vision to see far enough into the future to understand that we need to protect the earth, and it is time for us to stand together and do that now. Thank you so much.
Any additional comments? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. I don't see any chat messages. I'm gonna try. I'm gonna try this. If you'd like to make a statement and you have not made a statement this evening, please unmute yourself and just let me know. Is that someone that would like to make a statement or? Just hitting the spacebar. Okay. Any, any additional comments from the public?
This is Adam Fisher.
Oh, yes, Adam, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, my wife spoke earlier. I just wanted to add. I said to myself, why here in this land area? Wouldn't the old Price Chopper location be better? Is it not already zoned for such a project? You don't need more traffic lights because Price Chopper proved back in its busiest day, it could deal with a hundred car parking lot. Its residents would be next to a bus line and don't need to walk a quarter mile. There's a boat launch behind Pizza Hut and a scenic view across to Waterford in the Mohawk Canal lock across the river. And best of all, quite a sight to replace that eyesore of a vacant Price Chopper building with something new, all to the credit of Troy. You can still protect the forest that grows north of Hannaford and Lansingburg. Please use the laws of the state and of Troy that were put in place to protect the natural forest from developers. Don't let carcasses of animals pile up on the side of roads where forests once stood as their home and shelter. Please, nature does not lie. Time will tell. There is a very thin line between, do we want progress or profit? Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, I don't, I don't believe we have any new comment. Commissioners, now that we've gotten through the first, wait, if you'd like, you, you guys, we could open it up for any additional comment. I leave it up to you guys if you want to have a discussion or ask any members of the public any questions or provide any input or ask the applicant any questions.
Erin, thank you. This is Sarah Winger, and I, I do not have any questions for the public. I would just like to state for the record that we very much appreciate everyone's words and the plethora of written statements that we do have access to. What I would suggest, after my fellow commissioners have spoken, is that perhaps Andy, Erin, you could again state not to belabor it, but to state and prompt the commission to to make a statement of conclusion. I understand we are not to take action this evening, but if we are obligated to make statements, please let us know accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And if I may, Sarah, it's Andy. You're not under any obligations to make statements. We had scheduled this public hearing. You had scheduled this public hearing to seek input. I think you got some significant input. It would not be my recommendation that the board consider taking any type of action this evening. One, because I think you heard a lot this evening that you need to consider. And also, it's my understanding that written submissions were being submitted to the planning department as late as this afternoon. So I know I have not been able to review all written submissions so far. I don't know that the board has. So, so for those two reasons, it would be my suggestion that the board not take action this evening. When the city council asked you to make a recommendation, they did not put any type of timeframe on that resolution. So you are under no timeframe. So my suggestion would be to take no action this evening and, and consider in depth what you've heard this evening, as well as make sure that you have the opportunity to review and observe all the written comments.
Thank you, Andy.
This is Suzanne. I too would love to have the opportunity to read all of the comments. I started to read them. Well, I read the ones that came in before today, but there are so many more, and I would love the opportunity to give them all the attention they all deserve. So I have nothing else to say at this point.
This is Anthony. I like, Sarah, want to thank everyone who did give comment today and, you know, reiterate Andy and Suzanne's point that there were comments that came in late this afternoon. And that while I did review the ones that came in prior to that, there are ones that I haven't considered. And I wanted to assure everyone who did submit a written statement, whether or not they attended tonight, that we, we will consider all of those. So I would second the proposal not to take any action tonight. I did have a question that I wanted to direct to Andy for clarification, because I know that some of the people who spoke and submitted statements suggested that even though we're not going to be taking action under SEACRA, since all that we're being asked to is make a recommendation to the council, some members of the public had suggested that there should or could still be an EAF from the applicant so that we could properly assess the economic impact, or the environmental impact, rather, of the proposed change in zoning. I wondered if Andy could speak to that.
Sure. And I, I, I understand, and I know which comment you're referring to. And yes, you, you, SEACRA is a framework. It's an analytical framework and it's a process. You have the ability to consider potential impact to the environment, ecology, all of that outside of the SEACRA process, because the SEACRA process hasn't been initiated yet. The suggestion was, if I understood it correctly, don't lose sight of all these issues just because SEACRA may not have started. Still take them into consideration with your recommendation. And I think that, that's a very, very valid point. And I worked from the presumption that you would take those aspects into consideration as part of your recommendation. That being said, the resolution from the city council, which requested you make this recommendation, did contain language giving you the ability to request any additional information you thought necessary to make a recommendation back to them. So if the planning commission believes that an environmental assessment form would be helpful, you could request it. I don't know that you necessarily need an environmental assessment form at this juncture to be able to at least begin the process of ascertaining and putting into a framework those environmental aspects that will need to be considered down the road.
Yeah, Andy, along those lines, you know, a lot of the comments this evening focused around, I would say most were around the archaeological, historical significance of the site. There were a few other comments regarding stormwater and the ecology of the site. Through the SEACRA review process that the city council will do, and ultimately, if the zone is changed through the site plan review process that the planning commission will then undertake, would those issues be addressed at the state permitting level, in your opinion?
The simple answer is yes. I believe that development of this property for anything except a single-family home, where they could just go in and get a building permit and build a single-family home, I think any other development of this property will entail significant environmental review, which would include impact, potential impacts to cultural resources, historic resources, and archaeological resources. And once you begin that process, then there are state agencies that also become involved that will review what is being done at the local level. So again, however this property is developed, if it's developed, except for a single-family home, I think we'll undergo significant review in those aspects, both locally through the SEACRA process, as well as with the outside state agencies.
Okay. And just to further clarify, when you see, say, a single-family home, you literally mean one single-family home. If the site were to be developed as a residential subdivision, as one of the, the example plan submitted by the applicant was, that would be subject to all of these state permits, correct?
Correct. Again, the only thing that I think wouldn't be subject to that level of review would be one solitary, single-family home, which, under my read of Detroit zoning code, they would be able to go in and get a building permit. Now, that being said, construction of a driveway or even foundation excavation may require, may trigger those needs for additional state agency review. But I would think if anything they could do without further review would be one single-family home, and that's it. Any proposed subdivision would come before the planning commission, would trigger the SEACRA process, and would trigger all those independent state agency reviews.
Okay. And just one more point of clarification, too. This is currently, this is privately owned land. This is not public property. This is not, this is not, the city of Troy does not own this property. They do not control this property. They do not have a say in its sale or any contracts on this land. This is privately owned property that by right can develop a single-family R1 subdivision. I think that, again, the plan that was submitted, thirty-six lots, which would subject the entire site to clearing and grading in order to accommodate those, those homes. So the, again, the, the the discussion is whether or not single-family homes are a better use for that property, or whether a multifamily development with access to the waterfront, public access to the waterfront would be a better use of that property. I did see a few other hands raised. If you could raise your hands again.
Mr. Vera, your interpretation doesn't seem to be truthful.
Rafael, could you please state your name and address for the, for the record?
Yes, my name is Rafael Varela, 75 Hill Street. And I would like to mention that the recap or comment that you has made that the private owner could make a subdivision and grade the whole property doesn't seem to reflect the comments previously stated that any, any development other than one unique single-family home will trigger all those processes. That's what it was just stated. And it seems like you just seem to recap that as they could just do thirty-six single-family homes. And from what we have heard here, I just don't even understand why are we having all of this waste of time when it seems like one of the lawyers that just testified here said that any of this density of development is completely basically illegal under the Troy plan. So why are we giving time and waste of resources to try to do something that is illegal, legal for a private developer? I would say that would be the main question. We have a lot of problems in the city of Troy and the city council, the city engineer, and so many public employees and members of the public are wasting hours and hours of research and time and energy on something than according to the lawyers is illegal to start with. So I, that's, I would like to make sure that we all think about that. Why are we putting more energy onto this if we have a Troy comprehensive plan that already says this is completely illegal? There are certain limits and certain laws that describe what can be amended or not. And it seems from the words of the lawyer that this cannot be amended because it's completely outside the scope of what was defined in the Troy comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Andy, if I, if I misstated something earlier, can you, can you correct it for the record?
I, I think what he's referring to is you said that if the, if the property was approved for a major subdivision for, say, thirty-six lots, I believe they submitted a concept that showed they could put thirty-six zoning code compliant lots on the property, that that would result in substantial grading to the property. That's accurate. It would result in substantial grading. I think what Mr. Varela may have misunderstood is you were saying that as part of a subdivision review process, which requires planning commission review and approval and SEACRA review and approval. It wasn't just they go get the grade, they get to go grade the property tomorrow. I think he may have missed that point, that you were referring to something as part of a major subdivision, which would be reviewed by the planning commission through the SEACRA process, and also all the outside state agencies as interested agencies.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Yes, absolutely. A, a single-family subdivision, more than one home would, would absolutely require, if it disturbs more than, more than five acres, it would require a stormwater permit from DEC, and it would certainly require SEACRA review. Also, SHIPO, historic parks and preservation review as well. Andy, do we, do we have any comments regarding the? We received some comments regarding the comprehensive plan and whether or not this, this fits the comprehensive plan. I, I don't know if you have any comments regarding, you know, the comprehensive plan is not a law. A law was adopted to create the plan, but the plan itself is a series of recommendations. Is that, is that correct?
Yes. And in my opinion, any eventual decision from the planning commission to the city council on the pros and cons, the yes or no, the merits of the proposed rezone, would necessarily have to incorporate an analysis of how the proposed rezone to P District would tailor itself to what's included in the comprehensive plan. I, I think the planning commission's eventual recommendation will absolutely include an analysis of how P District on this property, how that would relate to the goals and valuation set forth in the comprehensive plan. I just, I think it has to be a part of the recommendation. I would guess that the city council would want to know from the planning commission what the planning commission's position is on that. Reasonable minds can differ over whether or not a particular project does or does not comply with the comprehensive plan. And a particular project can meet some of the goals and values of a comprehensive plan, but seem to detract from others. So it is a, it's a value decision. It's a judgment called by the planning commission, looking at the overall document and applying it to the potential rezone of this property. But I would, I would envision that that will definitely be part of the analysis, going back to the city council.
So, so along those lines, you know, I, I know that the comprehensive plan states that this area will be low-rise development. I believe it defines low-rise as three stories or less. In your opinion, Andy, would the, could the planning commission offer a recommendation for this, a positive recommendation for this, even if the proposal does have four stories, or are they limited to three stories by law, by the comprehensive plan? Is that, is that a legal limitation?
No, because what's being proposed is Plans District, the P District. And there's, if there's, there's specific limitations in the P District. The P District, and I don't want to bore everybody with zoning, but the P District is a floating zone. It's a Plans Development District, which floats over the city and can be pulled down onto any particular parcel when requested, if the parcel is suitable for it. And once it is in Troy's P District, there are parameters that it must meet, and then it must submit a design to the planning commission that gets approval as part of the process. I believe four stories would be allowable in the P District. And that, if the P District is implemented, those regulations are what would apply to this property.
Okay. And further along those lines, the comprehensive plan does suggest providing public access to the waterfront. And along those lines, the current zone of R1 would not allow that with a single-family development. A single-family development could go in that would allow that. We don't have, that, that's currently not being proposed by anybody. But, but that, that benefit being in, in accordance with the comprehensive plan in accordance with the comprehensive plan could, the planning commission could say that outweighs not meeting another characteristic of the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
It's it's correct, and I think it's fair to say that P District zoning gives the city and the planning commission through the design process the greater ability to uh require uh public accessible areas or protected areas. Whereas in the R1, if they come in for a conventional subdivision, uh they meet the subdivision regulations, they are likely going to get it approved, and the city is much more constrained in requiring or seeking public access or protected areas. So in the P District, the city as a whole has the better ability to design a project that results in public access, public access to the waterways, protected areas, uh protected archaeological areas, those type of things.
Okay, thank you. Um I do have two other hands raised. Um commissioners, if 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 you guys want to keep going, I I I feel like we should, you know, that it is only seven thirty. We've been going only for an hour and a half here. Um are repeat comments acceptable? Uh Sarah, I don't know if you want to speak for the group or at least for yourself?
I I I think that if there's an, if there's a participant in this meeting that wants to speak, they should speak, but uh we implore you, we will take everything we've already heard very seriously. And so please make your voice heard, but maybe two sentences if you don't have any new content to share. Of course, if you have new ideas that we really haven't heard, do share them. Otherwise, state your name, your position, and let's keep going.
Thank you, Sarah. Jessica Bennett.
Hi, guys. Thank you, and I will keep this brief. Um we've done a lot of talking over this phone call. Um and we've had the benefit of having the city lawyer on the call. Um we've all been kind of dancing around the potential of seeker. And uh what I think so many people on this call are kind of getting to is that we would like the planning commission to recommend initiating the seeker now because it saves all of us, uh you know, city employees especially, a lot of time um and tension and effort. Let this, let the state um uh run its course in the right way. It provides a betic, better public participation through a public scoping process with a positive designation instead of doing these outside studies. And they should recommend, the the commission should recommend to the council that the seeker be started now before any further potential zoning recommendations. Um it has the benefit of public scoping. Why should we double-track the process? I'm sure you guys don't want to be on these sort of calls, you know, for time in memoriam. Um the seeker process will streamline this and um you know, we've been talking about these plans as though uh the site plans as of their potential. Sure, they're not officially filed, but there was a workshop uh last month about them. Um we're, this is all in response to those plans. So we really implore you here. Uh start the EAF, which inherently addresses zoning and initiate the seeker process. Um it will make all of our lives easier, including yours. So thank you.
Uh okay, just, J- Jessica, just to clarify, the, you you mentioned a few terms in in your statement. Um first, an environmental assessment form is the first step of the secret process. That, that form does not require scoping or an environmental impact statement. Those two items would come after a declaration is made. So once the board making a decision, whether that be the planning commission or in this case, the city council, has the environmental assessment form and all of the supporting documentation, they would make a decision as to whether or not this proposal has an impact on the environment, which would be a positive declaration, or does not have an impact on the environment or has minimal impact on the environment, which would be a negative declaration. After that point, if it was paused decked, as we say, that would start the scoping process for an environmental impact statement. Uh Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of that, but I just want to clarify that we're throwing around a lot of these terms and you know, they're they're very specific to the process.
Uh a- a- and that's correct, and and thank you, Jessica, for saying that I'm a benefit to the conversation. I usually hear the opposite. Um uh so I appreciate that. The wh- whether or not uh something's going to require an environmental impact statement is a decision that under seeker is made by the lead agency. Um I don't based upon what I know of this proposed project right now and the request for the P District zoning, that the planning commission at this juncture would be the appropriate lead agency. Uh appropriate, the lead agency is the one that has the most decision-making authority over an action, which would be the city council in this instance, because they're going to have the final uh yea or nay vote on rezoning it if they choose to hear it. So we're 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 not to that point yet where we could even uh determine who a lead agency is. There's the possibility that the city council says we're not interested in entertaining this. So to to go through the environmental impact statement process in advance of them even agreeing to consider the request, um I I I don't think is warranted.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. It was my understanding that per the November workshop, that the city council um I don't know if there's a formal way, but that they they certainly said, we want to kick this over to the planning commission, which kind of seemed like it put them in the lead agency. But also, since the EAF kind of triggers all of this, um that would be, you know, an outcome is that we would have a designated lead agency anyway, which again, just to for, to to me seems like the most clear-cut way for everybody involved, including everybody in the city.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jessica. Um I do have a question that I received over chat. I just want to read that out and um um it was from uh uh Wild Bill, uh who I believe still, maybe still on the call here. Uh is a, there you are, uh is a standard housing development, be it twelve houses or twenty houses or thirty-six possible under a PDD zone? Uh the short answer is yes, those are possible under a PDD zone. Uh the longer answer is they are possible now um without a PDD zone. So again, without a rezone by law, by right, the developer can clear this entire site and put in a residential subdivision. Should that be approved by the 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 planning commission? And again, a- as Andy has stated, that approval is likely be because it is a by-right use. Um and that, and that subdivision would come without public access to the waterfront, without the need for trails, without the city wouldn't have to take over the roads. The roads could remain private. Um it, this is not conservation area. This is not a public park. This is not public land. This is a private parcel of land.
Um I have one question. Um you mentioned before that you believe the comprehensive plan is just a recommendation, not a law. If we could hear from the city attorney uh a confirmation of whether this is just an opinion or is uh actually a fact based on law?
Comprehensive plan is um an aspirational document. Um it makes recommendations on how uh it envisions the city uh in the future and then makes concrete recommendations on how to get there. Uh what the law requires is that all zoning uh be enacted in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Um so the, anything, anytime the city council seeks to amend zoning, change zoning, uh enact new zoning, it has to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. That, that's what's required.
Okay, I do have a, a few people that have um either sent me messages over chat or raised their hand. Uh Keith, I'm going to start with you. Um and then just uh, just so everyone can be aware, I'm going to follow with uh Grace and then uh Friends Up. All right?
Uh I thank you. I appreciate uh the extra time. I I did want to make a comment. Uh as a matter of law, of course, a comprehensive plan is just a blueprint. Um but I, that does not mean uh that it's so malleable as to not have any teeth at all. Or else the, the legal requirement of consistency with the comprehensive plan would mean anything. In other words, uh if you tried to zone this parcel for an industrial plant uh type of use, um you couldn't just say, well, golly, you know, there's going to be public access now because of a kayak uh launch. Uh so let's go ahead and zone it because you can uh weigh the differences. Where it violates the comprehensive plan, even a recommendation, it still violates the comprehensive plan. Uh which brings me to what I think that maybe the wise recommendation would be here, which is since your notice of hearing uh did not indicate that this would uh, that you'd be considering changes to the comprehensive plan to accommodate a PDD, it might not be a bad idea uh to renotice the hearing and have a hearing where we consider and make comment on consistency with the comprehensive plan in this PDD. I think the real value uh for the commission and the public here would be to, uh like Mr. Brick was saying, uh if this is going to be a PDD, that the city's got some control over what those rules are going to be, which means you can approve this with conditions such as uh any PDD development here has to comply with the heights and setback limitations, the ecological goals of the comprehensive plan, and and you can devise conditions for uh an approval of recommendation, uh sorry, recommended, recommended uh conditions of approval that would actually uh make sure the comprehensive plan consistency is achieved, if that's even possible here. I'm not really sure it is, but having a hearing where we know that that's what we're going to discuss because it's such an important part of this proposal might not be uh a horrible idea. Uh the other thing that does, again, I just want to reiterate this, that, you know, um uh as the gentleman stated, uh Mr. Mullin stated, that that asking for an EAF at this particular time does not mean you're obligating yourself to be lead agency. It's clearly allowed. And it clearly would give the information that you need to understand if this site has the carrying capacity for the kind of uses that are proposed in the PDD. Uh even though a PDD allows for an awful lot of flexibility for the city to do some really cool and innovative things, the PDD awful, also allows enormously more intense development here. And we don't know if the land has the capacity for that kind of intense development. That's what an EAF would do. It would bring the applicant into the process to disclose some facts uh that we may not have because we don't live on that site. Um and just the last comment, because it's just sort of bothering me. Um you know, we all know that this is private land and that this isn't owned by the city of Troy. That's why we're here for this process. Uh the idea that that negates some of the negative impacts from this proposal, I I hope you see is a little preposterous, right? What we're looking at is to determine whether the exercise of authority of the city of Troy to fundamentally change the kind of uses that are allowed uh at this property, whether that's appropriate at this time. Yes, it's private land. No, that's not relevant, right? Because we're still in a process. We're trying to figure out what the development rules are for this property. Uh so I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you, Keith. Um next, uh Grace, I think you, uh Grace might be in the middle of joining us. Is there anyone else on that would like to make a statement? Grace, I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, I don't, I don't think there's any additional comments. Oh, uh Rebecca, yes.
Yes, thanks for the extra time. I, I just wanted to to understand, I think, some of the confusion of seeker is the idea of segmentation, which I've seen come up a lot. And the, the planning commission is in the process, we're in a position to make a recommendation on rezoning for known project. And so without the two being one, as a way of reviewing whether or not the change of zoning is a wise decision would be a part of the actual seeker process, which I believe I heard that the project itself would be a type-one action, which would probably trigger a pause deck and the full environmental impact statement. So the zoning in C3 of the EAF would be a consideration at that point in time. Is that how you are seeing this process at all? Does that?
The, the way, the way we anticipate this process working is that, yes, this would be considered a type-one action. Uh the, the, it, it easily meets the current, we, it it meets the threshold for that. Uh I believe, given its area and the fact that it is a zone change. The development itself, that was, the the sketch plan that was submitted, itself would also be a type-one seeker action. So there's actually two type-one seeker actions to go from what exists today to the plan that was submitted in the narrative. There would be a type-one action by the city council for the zone change, then there would be a type-one action by the planning commission for site plan review.
Right, and I think the question is, what is the wisdom of doing two, uh rather than doing one?
That's, that's the process. And Andy, I believe, will correct me if I'm wrong. This is, this is to c- to call this segmentation, I is, I believe, a misinterpretation of segmentation. This isn't rezoning half the parcel to then rezone the other half of the parcel. The action is the rezone, and that is a complete action. The plan, the site plan that comes after that is is completely secondary to the rezone.
Right, but the project wouldn't be applicable without the zoning change, and I think that's why there's some confusion.
Correct, but they function, they function independently, which is why I, again, Andy, you can chime in and provide some clarity.
Sure. Um segmentation is frowned upon under the secret process. And what it is, is div- um a no, uh related projects into separate, seemingly unrelated portions and doing independent environmental reviews. Uh by way of example, if you had a you wanted to build a twenty-lot residential subdivision, and you went in and said, well, I want to build five lots, so do my secret review, do a secret review based upon five lots, get your five lots approved, then come back and say, I want to do another five lots, and in effect, divide that, the impacts of that full-blown twenty-lot subdivision into four separate reviews. That, that segmentation, um and it's, it's frowned upon under seeker. It's permitted in limited instances. But in order to review seeker properly, it has to be a set of actions or activities as those are defined under the secret regulation. And I think some of the confusion is the fact that what this board is considering this evening is a recommendation only and a non-binding recommendation uh to the city council on whether or not to even consider a zoning change request. Uh doesn't meet the definition of an act or an action under seeker. So it would only be segmentation if the seeker process was in place and taking place. Uh since seeker hasn't started yet, this wouldn't be segmentation of it. Uh what would happen is this planning commission is going to make a recommendation. The city council, at that point, uh whether based upon a recommendation or irrespective of the recommendation, I would hope it'd be based upon it, um is going to make a decision on whether or not to process and consider the the rezone request. Um and and once, if the city council says, we're not going to consider it, there is no action. There's no need for review. Nothing is going to happen. If they do say, okay, based upon your recommendation or irrespective of the recommendation, we're going to let the applicant be heard, we're going to, we're going to consider this request for a rezone. Uh we're going to process the application and make a decision on it, one way or the other. Then right away, they are now in a seeker process. All of those actions are covered under seeker. And once they make the determination to hear the rezone request, seeker would then kick in because that would be an activity or an action under it. The planning commission making a recommendation to the city council at this juncture in the process isn't an action under seeker. So the seeker process doesn't apply at this point, therefore it's not segmented.
Okay, and the planning commission, even at this stage, they they can request additional information. Is that correct, Andy? So they could, the planning commission could request the EAF, as Keith suggested. They also could request a traffic They also could request a traffic study, they could request a visual impact or renderings or things along those lines. But getting into discussions about the architecture of the buildings and things like that might be premature at this point. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, the, the, the resolution from the city council requesting the recommendation does say that, that the planning commission is authorized to request additional information from the applicant. Um, that being said, you, you have to, as a planning commission, view that in a rule of reason. You're making a recommendation on whether or not they should consider a rezone to a P district. So I don't know how architectural renderings or something at that level of detail would educate the planning commission to any significant degree on the question of whether or not to recommend considering just the rezone.
So, so really, the, the additional information should focus on the increase in density? Because that's the, that's really the, the largest change as part of the, the, the transition from an R1 to a P zone?
I, I can envision a number of things that the planning commission may request from the applicant beyond density. Some things they may request based upon some comments they've heard this evening. So I wouldn't want to, you know, pigeon the whole thing into just a, a density analysis. But the, the planning commission, keeping in mind what there have been tasks to do. Let us know whether or not you think we should even consider a request for, to a rezone to a P district. And utilizing, you know, a rule of reason and reasonableness test, whatever they feel they could request from the applicant that will assist them in making that recommendation, I, I think they have the right to request from the applicant.
You know, what seems to me, based on what's being said, is that a recommendation that could be made with integrity would be that we oppose the rezoning of this. And furthermore, we think that any subdivision plan should undergo a type one action. And furthermore, we think that the city council has an interest in providing for public access to the waterfront, even under the current zoning. And that would be, sum up a lot of what's been said here. So thank you, please think about outside the box, making a recommendation to actually preserve open space.
I, Andy, I, would a subdivision be a type one action in this case? Or I believe it would be unlisted, right? It wouldn't meet the, there wouldn't be enough units to be considered type one?
It, it depends. If it's substantially contiguous to a historic district, it might trigger threshold. I can't say, but off the bat, without looking at it, it may be type one or it may be unlisted. I think the request for the P district is definitely a type one.
Okay, thank you. Sharie?
What if the land was placed in a land trust? Or what if First Nations people were guardians of the site? And there was an educational museum or whatever? Would that require rezoning?
Uh, yes, an educational museum would require a rezone as that is not allowed in an R1 district.
What if that were placed in a land trust?
Well, I believe to be placed into a land trust, the property would have to be under the control of somebody who would like to do that. So, you know, I'm sure the applicant who's looking to develop this, you know, presumably to make a profit, would be interested in making a profit on the land any, any way he could. So I, I suppose he would entertain an offer if, if someone wanted to purchase the property and put it into a land trust? Any other questions?
Is there a possibility to recommend, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand, but?
Oh, you did, you did, you, you put your hand down, I, I, so I didn't, I didn't see to call on you.
Yeah, is there, is there a possibility to recommend then that instead of classifying it as a P planned unit development? If we like to do it as, if the planning commission can take our recommendation that this is a forest cover that needs to be protected, instead of developed into a unit, into a residential unit, be it whether it's privately owned or for commercial, you know, purposes? Is there a possibility that the planning commission can recommend that this is a, this is a space that Troy community members want to protect? And rezoning should happen only in the case of, only, only with a rationale of preserving this zone? So that's just a question that I had.
I'm, could, could you repeat, I'm not, I'm not sure I understood that, the, the question there.
So I, I was wondering in terms of like whether, like you say that it's anyways a private property and stuff like that, like and people can develop anywhere, but the consensus tonight is to preserve the land. And if preserve this forest cover. So what can like also planning commission do in terms of like taking our recommendation of wanting to preserve the space instead of developing into a residential unit per se, or a commercial residential unit, which is, which is what is happening right now, so?
Okay, so I, I, I think, I think I might understand the question. One of the things the planning commission could do, and this is, this is actually where the P zone provides a little bit more for, a, a, a little bit more opportunity for public input, for city input, as opposed to the R1 zone. The planning commission could recommend the zone change, but suggest that certain, either certain area be placed into protective easement. You know, again, currently the plan was to have a, a portion of the waterfront reserved for a public trail. Another portion, I think, an acre to the south of the property, the, the proposal was to keep that wooded. Those, those areas could be placed into permanent restrictive easements that guaranteed public access, but, you know, had some sort of prohibition on, on, on building new structures or clearing the land. I mean, those types of, those types of restrictions and stipulations could be placed on, on, on a rezone or on a site plan, for that matter. Andy, I don't know if that's?
Yeah, and, and not just, I, I mean, conditions can be placed upon the, the P district and, and included in any recommendation from the planning commission. They wouldn't necessarily have to be limited to public access. It could be, you know, present, preservation of sensitive cultural resource inventories, preservation of historic areas on the property, you know, those type of things. But I, I think the question was, can they make a negative recommendation for the P district and then recommend that the land be conserved? If I understood it correctly?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, then I misunderstood the question.
So the, and, and all I can say to that is, they were asked to review and make a recommendation on whether or not to consider a rezone for the P district. What they, I think the planning commission, it, it's free within their authority to determine what they want to include in that recommendation. Not only what that recommendation is going to be, but once they make the recommendation, anything else that they want to suggest or, or recommend, I, I think they have the ability to include in, in their, in their transmittal back to the city council.
All right, we're, we're just about at eight o'clock here. Raphael?
Yes, one last, one last question. Given the huge public support for conserving this land, is there any possibility the city could take this land by eminent domain to make it into a park? Preserve the cultural heritage of the First Nation people?
That's certainly something you could approach your, your city council person and discuss.
I, I'm asking the, the city lawyer, if you don't mind, Aaron.
I'm not, not an eminent domain lawyer, it's a pretty specific area of law. But my understanding of it is that any municipality, if they deem a public purpose, has the ability to consider eminent domain. It would also require a reasonable compensation to the property owner from the municipality who would, would be condemning it and turning it to, to public use. That's the law of it. The reality of it is, whether or not that's something to be considered by the city council, I, I don't know. I, 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 I think I, to a limited extent, know the financial situation of, of all local municipalities, whether it be state, county, or, or city. I, I don't know how viable that is, but I think theoretically, it, it's poss, it's a possibility. In, in reality, I don't know that it is.
Thank you.
And, and Aaron, I'm, I'm not sure who's chairing the meeting because DeeDee isn't here, but I would suggest that we do do one action tonight, which is a resolution to close the public hearing.
Okay, um, Sarah, I will turn it over to, oh, I'm sorry, Barb, go ahead.
I have a question about that. Are we certain that we do want to close the public hearing or possibly keep it open? I mean, I'm not sure we need any action at all tonight with, you know, there's lots of discussion, lots of ideas.
Yeah, I'm confused.
It's totally up to you if you want to keep the public hearing open, Barb?
Well, I, I was just thinking we, that it was not a proper thing to take an action to close it at this time, so?
Which, which is fine, that, that's completely up to the board. But then my suggestion would be the board should decide a specific date that's going to be adjourned to. And that will save us the requirement of doing publication costs.
That makes sense. Would that be the next?
This is Anthony, I was going to say, next, oh. Sorry, Barb.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say the exact same thing, that if, if we did leave the hearing open, which I'm not opposed to, I take it would be because we're going to vote on a future date and we could make it clear tonight what that date will be that we would actually vote on the recommendation.
So, so currently, the agenda for, we have yet to post the schedule for 2021, but we did select a date for the January meeting at our December 17th regular planning commission meeting. That's going to be January 28th, Thursday at 6:00 PM. Currently, we do not have a full schedule for that meeting. I, I suspect the public hearing portion of this would not take another two hours. So the commission, we, we, we could move it to that date as long as the commission's okay with, you know, the fact that that might be a slightly longer meeting, which again is why we scheduled this as a special meeting.
Uh, this is Suzanne. I have a question as to whether or not closing the public hearing is closing it just for the discussion about changing the zoning? Or is it closing it on, on the whole project?
It's closing it just for the, the discussion for the recommendation by the planning board. The city council, because it's a zone change, the city council has to have public hearings on this as well before they make their decision.
Okay.
And then, and then again, if moving one step beyond that, if the zone change is approved, the planning commission would then have public hearings as part of the site plan approval process. So there, there will be public, many, many, many more public hearings on this if, if it moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
So then I, it, it sounds like there's not going to be a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Andy, do we need to make a motion to adjourn till the 28th?
Yes, that would be my suggestion. If you wanted to keep it open, do by motion to continue it until the regularly scheduled meeting, 6:00 PM, January 28th.
Okay, this is Barb, and I will make that motion, but I do agree, it cannot be, you know, we gave a lot of time to it tonight and we wanted to, and that's why we set the special meeting. So that, just that we understand that won't be a two-hour public hearing. But, so I move that we adjourn this public hearing to January 28th, 6 o'clock.
This is Suzanne, I second that.
Aaron, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, Kevin, yes.
What's the process at the next meeting?
Well, this is actually where I wanted to kind of discuss that with the board, the commission a little bit. I, I, to me, it sounds like the commission's not going to be ready to make, take an action at the January meeting because the commission's going to want to review additional documentation. And commissioners, if there's additional documentation that you believe you will require based on either your, your own review of, of this proposal or based on some of the public comment that you received tonight, I, I suggest that that be requested of the applicant today in the, in the interest of keeping a reasonable timeframe here. I certainly don't think it's worth adjourning till January 28th just to tell the applicant that they need a traffic study, if that can be done this evening.
Can I ask another question?
You can, Kevin.
So what, I, I'd like to know how the, how the meeting's going to work, the, the next meeting. Are we going to, because there's been no discussion on, on our end. All right, so do we make a presentation, then we go into a whole other discussion on that afterwards? How, what, I mean, at some point, where, where does this, where does, where do we come? Because I, I'm just looking for a decision on which project the city wants, the single family or the apartments. One of the two projects I want to move forward with. So I, I, I just want to know what my process is at the next meeting.
Well, um, I, I have to, I have to defer to the, the commissioners. Sarah, Barbara, Suzanne, Anthony, what are your feelings on what the, the process at the next meeting should be?
Now, this is Barb. I would say we, we are, I, I'm not able to define that right now. I, well, my simple motion was to just carry on the, the, carry forward the public hearing and we will have made a lot of progress this night and at that time.
How, can you tell me how you envision the next meeting going?
Nope, DeeDee will be here and that's how it'll be done. Our, our chairman is not here tonight, so I don't think, I'm, at least from my point of view, we will decide that, she'll, she'll give us some guidance on that. I, I'm not in a position to do that.
And this is Sarah, Andy. The very, the very first thing that we, that we heard was that no action shall be taken tonight. Yet we're talking about the commission taking an action. What action would we be taking?
And, and when Aaron and I mentioned at the beginning, Sarah, no action, what I was referring to is action upon the recommendation. Continuing the public hearing until next month is technically an action. But I think the, the, the public will, will, will forgive us the lack of clarity. What I meant was that the board would be taking no action on the recommendation, no conclusive final action to go back to the city council. Is what I, what, what I meant. If, if the board this evening wants to take the action of continuing it, I, I think that's fine, I think that's appropriate. If the board wants to take no action tonight and we just leave, then when, if you did want to reschedule the public hearing for the 28th, it would have to be renoticed and republished. By announcing through a motion to continue until the 28th here at the meeting, everybody that's here that obviously has an interest is now on notice that the public hearing will be continued to that day.
And what I would like to know is, shall the commission take an action such as voting to make a recommendation to the city council? Procedurally, do we vote on that? In public?
Yes, I, I believe that you do. You, you're not talking about tonight, you're talking about at some point in the future.
Correct.
What's the mechanics of getting the recommendation over to the city council?
Thank you.
I, I, I think it's absolutely by vote at a public meeting, with the board voting. And I think likely something this, you know, that's going to require that much extensive study and research, maybe something that includes a draft resolution for the board to review. But no, ultimately, yes, it absolutely, the mechanics of it is a, a vote at a public meeting.
Thank you.
Andy, can I ask another question of Andy? It's up to Aaron, but go ahead.
Aaron, is that all right?
It's up to me. Yes, yes, go ahead.
Andy, can you tell me what the process is gonna be for the next meeting?
If, if, if the board this evening continue, votes to continue it to January twenty eighth. Then at six o'clock on January twenty eighth, the board will be obligated to reconvene the public hearing. At that time, the board can do a number of things. The board can. It, you know, accept public comment from everyone that's there. The board can open a public hearing and immediately do a motion to close the public hearing. Um, or the board can take public comment, close the public hearing and take action. I, I can't specifically say what's gonna happen. Um, all I do know is that if they continue it to that meeting. Then they have to at least open the public hearing at that meeting and at some point either continue it or close it. After that, what occurs from there is up to the board and, and, and I can't speak to that, Kevin. And I, I'm not trying to be vague. I'm trying to be as clear as possible, but I can't, I can't speak to what the board's gonna do from that point.
Uh, this is Barb again. I made the motion in the spirit of saying, we're not really taking an action. All we're doing is setting up another date. So that we have not entirely closed the situation. So I made the motion. I don't know if anyone seconded it. I can't recall.
I did.
Okay, Suzanne seconded it. So Aaron, um, do you want one of us to call for a vote or?
No, I will, I will call for a vote. So, so the motion here is to adjourn the public hearing until uh, January twenty eighth. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Anthony Mullen?
Yes.
And uh, Deidra Rudolph is, uh, is absent. So four zero, the public hearing has been tabled until the January twenty eighth meeting. Um, I would say though, I, I, I think, I think the applicant has asked some questions this evening that uh. That the, 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 the commission, I, I, I think the commission should provide some additional guidance to the applicant ahead of the January twenty eighth meeting. Um, otherwise, the applicant has uh, is, is not working towards addressing any of the comments that were received this evening. Um. I feel the commission has to provide some guidance here and, and.
Okay, this is Barb. Uh, we don't really have to do that tonight, uh, because we are four people each in our separate spaces and we have not got a co, a comprehensive response. So be, I understand your point that before the next meeting, uh, they should have uh, some guidance, but they don't have it tonight. We have no way of doing that.
In, in the ab, and this is Sarah, in the absence of an actual proposal. I, uh, I, I don't. I don't see the need for any supplemental information.
When you say actual proposal, what do you mean by actual proposal, Sarah?
Given that we don't have an actual project being proposed, we have examples. And we will not.
The planning commission has to, has to make a recommendation for the zone change. Is there any additional documentation the planning commission needs in order to make a recommendation regarding that?
I speak for myself when I say no.
Okay.
This is Suzanne. I would love a couple of days to be able to go through all the material. And formulate a couple of questions about what we can and cannot do and float them around to the board. And maybe get a consensus of some kind. I can certainly understand why it would be very important for the applicant. To have a clue before the day of the meeting as to what we would like to do. So. I would like to be able to give him something and I would like something that I can look at and read and say, okay, that's what I'm agreeing to or disagreeing with or, or whatever.
Okay. Uh, then I, 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 I suppose if there's no additional input from commissioners, that a uh, a vote to um. Adjourn the meeting would be in order.
This is Sarah.
This is Anthony. Before we do that, I just.
Go ahead, Anthony.
I was just going to agree with Sarah's comment that it, I do feel a bit of a loss because I know we have the concept from what was submitted. But I, uh, I'd also would like some more specifics, uh, you know, I, as I know that there were comments earlier tonight that uh, an EAF. Could be considered by the commission at this point in time. It would be helpful to have that. Um, I'm not saying that we're requiring it, but certainly more information would be. Helpful to us in, in making a decision on whether or not to recommend this to the council.
Okay, perfect. So, so Kevin, is a long form EAF something that you guys can prepare and submit ahead of the January meeting?
I defer to Jamie.
Oh, I think Jamie might not be able to. Oh, okay. Jamie, I don't see your. Hang on a second. I don't think I can unmute you, Jamie. I, I, I think I can ask you to unmute, but I can't unmute you.
Aaron, you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, no, whatever the, the board really wants, we certainly, you know, the board needs time to think about additional. Things that they need from me. I'm okay with that. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. If they want the, a full EAF, I'm fine with that. That's nothing big that we can do. Uh, I mean, certainly the, the big thing about, you know, typically when I do a rezoning process, typically there's two EAFs. Typically, there's the EAF for rezoning and then there's another EAF for the site plan application because. There's unknown quantities, for example, for stormwater and things like that. Certainly, we can take an educated, you know. Estimate at some of those things like water sewer flow rates, things like that. But typically, you know, in a zoning seeker form. There's just less specifics in there and obviously tonight's meeting, a lot of people are looking for very specific information. Which I think is very wonderful, but that kind of plays out during the site plan review process. Um, so I, I, I think there's a little difference right there that I'm taking out, but whatever the board wants, certainly. You can take a couple of days to think about it. I, I will try to generate as much as possible. I think what Kevin was trying to really get at was during the January twenty eighth meeting, obviously, there's a lot of comments that we received tonight and a lot of them were very good. Um. But obviously, it's my job to represent the applicant here and let the board understand from a, a different point of view. How these comments will be addressed or how they are addressed, you know, through this process. So uh, I look forward to at least being able to speak on the, the January twenty eighth meeting. And hopefully, you know, I have a list, running list here that some of the comments that people have. And at that point, uh, you know, I, I hopefully will have that and any other additional information the planning board has for the Janu, January twenty eighth meeting. Aaron?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excellent. Uh, Kevin, does that work? Does that work for you? Is that enough, enough guidance for, for this stage?
Yeah, I, I mean, if, 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 um, if Jamie's good with it, you know, it's just.
Okay, so we, uh, uh, a long, a long EAF has been requested for the rezoning.
Aaron, Aaron, it's Andy, can, I, I should just state for the benefit of the public that's still listening. Um, Kevin is the applicant and Jamie is his project engineer. Um, we probably should have introduced them beforehand. That's who we've been speaking with.
Thank you, Andy, yes. Um, so again, a long form EAF has been requested um, by Anthony. Um, and the applicant will be providing that in advance of the January twenty eighth meeting. Uh, we will of course make that available. Um, if it's received at the time we publish the agenda. Um. Is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Suzanne. I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
This is Anthony. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I'm assuming you were not opposed to adjourning, Anthony? Is that correct?
No, that, sorry, I said aye.
Okay, excellent. That's uh, four zero. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.